Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay?
Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay? Okay, welcome to Monday meetings B O C C. We're going to start this with an executive session I that I called for potential litigation. I think we'll start 15 minutes while we do that. Okay?
Okay, we're back from an executive session, no decisions were made. Gentlemen, we have you here to talk about the, what do we call that thing? Dangerous dog. And I have a question, I was gonna call you today, Brad, but I have you here, so I was gonna, I'll just ask you the question anyway. I was, I was looking up and I saw, and I, and I did, I don't have the bill number on me about being able to hire non-citizens to do law enforcement work. And I was just curious on what you thought, it, it kind of makes me a little nervous. And I don't know if, you probably don't want to get into that here, but.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of the mail, I don't know the number on it, and I think they're, they're looking at that, actually, it's a, an amendment, it did go through last year. And this is a tweak in some of the language, basically, it would allow, uh, such what's known as green card, cardholders, and also the DACA program. They're called Dreamers, kids that were brought here or born here as kids. I think, I think technically, I guess, they had to be brought here as children, that would allow them to be hired in law enforcement positions. I know some of the sheriffs on the east side of the state are in favor of that due to staffing issues. And they know, I know the sheriff particularly of Franklin County, which is Pasco, I think his population is somewhere in the seventy percent range is Hispanic, so there's a lot of support for it over there. I, I did have some concerns about the wording of it and kind of circumvented their civil service commission, the way it was worded, so it gives the sheriff discretion, really civil services set up to have an objective hiring process or create a list, this kind of circumvents that by giving a additional points to candidates beforehand, so I'm, I'm not, overall, not really excited about it.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know that would really apply.
I have to look at it deeper, I just, well, it's already passed the Senate, right? And, and unanimously.
Yeah, similar, uh, similar bill is in front of the House, I don't know if it's gone forward yet.
Yeah. Okay. What are we gonna do with the dogs?
Well, well, good morning, we're back here talking about dogs again. And I, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to chat about it. Last week, Ms. Grayson, myself, and Chief Admin, Jordan Spencer, had an opportunity to communicate regarding basic RFQs for the Dangerous Animal Board. And in that process, it became clear that there was some confusion regarding who was going to be providing the clerk, and the clerk would ultimately be provided by the sheriff. But in, in that discussions, it also became clear that maybe the Dangerous Animal Board might not have as much support from this board as might have been supported by the prior board that approved it. And so what we're here today to do is just discuss what other options are available before we go forward with that RFQ process. Personally, um, you know, when I came in and presented this stuff on, on the, on the two workshops that you were present in, um, I took no position on, on either option. First option being, uh, the board, the second option being, say, a hearings examiner or sending it to district court. But I think in reevaluating it, um, maybe this board might be considering that a hearing examiner might be a better option.
Well, I think we kind of leaned towards the board because Lewis County was headed that way. But I thi- I think since then, they've kind of abandoned that and put it over to the hearings examiner.
So, um, yes, the, the short answer is yes. In two thousand sixteen, when, when things blew up in their face up there, they obviously took the politically savvy position and presented it to the people to make the discuss, the decision on, on what is basically, is Fido gonna live or not, and, and how are we gonna approach, um, telling people that a family member essentially is, is not really welcome in the community. Um, and so we're gonna let the community make that, especially after, you know, getting hit with some significant financial penalties through civil suits. The, as Ms. Grayson brought up and as in my discussions with Jimmy, who is the civil attorney in Lewis County, discussed, the original, um, board was under the Health and Human Services, um, and now it's gone, the A C A has gone under the guise of the sheriff, um, similar to what we have here. A board would still work here. There might be an inconvenience, though, for board members, as we presented to the board recently, as well as in those prior two workshops, is that you know, you're probably looking at three, maybe four days where we'd actually use the board. That's not a lot of time for members of the community, um, to be waiting by their telephone for a call that say, hey, friend, we're gonna need you this month, and that could be inconvenient, and probably you might see a diminishment of interest in actually participating in the board. Uh, the thing about having a hearing examiner or having district court or, but what we're suggesting potentially is the hearing examiner is that they're always available because, you know, money speaks. And they're, what a hearing examiner does do, and this is the important thing about both options, is that it removes the decision from the policing aspect or the policing arm of government and gives it to an impartial quasi judicial officer. In that way, it doesn't look as if the county, um, the government is looking to separate or take a family member away from, um, you know, the, the alleged, um, household. And so we want to, we really want to have that separation, and, and so that's the decision that this board needs to make.
Yeah, I think the separation is important, and, and I also think we'd be asking the board to interpret our, our, our code kind of legal interpretation, and anytime you have volunteers on a board, you're gonna, you run the risk of having people that have emotions one way or the other. So, uh, I don't know what my colleagues think, but I kind of more, I, I'm kind of leaning towards this hearing examiner that should be a more impartial and it separates the duties, and that's what they do anyway. We ask them to do it on building issues uh, hearing examiner, so.
Where does that person come from?
We, uh, we retain a, we just reappointed a hearing examiner last year, year before.
Mr. Schottamire?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
He might be willing to do that, otherwise we could, um, seek an RFQ for interested attorneys.
That's how we got him, it was an RFQ process that went out and people applied to it, and then we picked, uh, this gentleman he just mentioned.
So is this a new responsibility that he would have? Does, does?
This would be a new responsibility, at my understanding.
So do we need to ask him if he's willing to do it?
Yeah, I think we would.
Yeah, I think the, the answers are yes and yes. So.
And you said that we currently would use him three or four times a year, is that just based on history?
Based on the number of actual cases that were referred or investigated, yes. That, just based on history, is not a lot.
We're targeting strictly just the dangerous animal definition here, right?
Dangerous or potentially dangerous animal, yes.
Okay.
Or the, a hearing examiner would not deal with any other op, it's just the determination of those, one of the other.
Okay.
Just add a couple of things, one, I know, previously, the courts dealt with this under the old ordinance, and I, in discussion with them, they really don't have a great deal of interest in wanting to take this back on, dealing with that, and also the way the codes right now, the hearing has to occur, can have up to ninety days, so we could, uh, uh, stretch them out a ways and maybe if need be do several at the same occasion, same date, just to limit the expense of it as well.
So if, if the, the current attorney that we have, he's on retainer, so if he chooses to accept this, he, if, and he had an animal case, he would just eat up his retainer? Or would we have to add, would we have to increase that?
I'm not able to answer that question, that's a conversation that this board would have to have with Mr. Schottamire. He's been retained by this board to do hearing. Obviously, yes, there is retainer, I'm speaking generally now.
Yeah.
And that retainer is, is intended to cover basic expenses up to a point. So, wh- I think the discussion needs, by this board, needs to be had with Mr. Schottamire to say, A, are you willing to do it? And B, if so, how much is this going to, uh, cost? And, and by the way, here is what we're looking at, maybe three to four hearings per year, it's not a lot, but. Is what we're looking at, maybe three to four hearings per year. It's not a lot, but. And this is what it will entail. And if you need a write-up of the basic idea. Procedures that would occur, I can provide that to the board so that you can present that to Mr. Schottamire. In, in your discussions with him.
So besides the hearing examiner, the other two options we have are, I think you said district court?
Well, district court has once heard the, once heard these types of cases. And as Sheriff Thurman stated, they're not really, they were not really interested in retaining them. I think you're pretty much aware that, you know, condemning Fido is not really highly. Is not one of those things that people want to really do. And when you, you know, judges are political monsters, just like everyone else who is elected. And so they want to ensure that. They're, they retain their electability. You know, and. So, but that's a question and a conversation that this board could have with District Court. And I'm sure that they're, they would entertain the conversation. Whether they dissent to it, I don't have that answer to you, but it's obviously something that maybe you should investigate and, and determine if, if they are willing to.
Okay, and so then the other option was for us to do it here is to have a, a dangerous animal board?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, you know, five individuals from the community are just hanging around by the telephone waiting for a call. Yeah, we got one this month.
That would be the only board responsibility is that?
That's their only responsibility. And I mean, that is a big ask for people, you know. Hey, we might want to go to Cabo next, next week or, you know, we're headed over to Sun River to go fly fishing, whatever. Yeah, and, and oh, now I got this responsibility. That's kind of inconvenient and I get that.
Okay.
And then the other option would be a hearing examiner.
Right, great. I'm comfortable with seeing if the hearing examiner is willing to do this.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, so first step.
Would you write that, write that up, what you talked about?
I'll prepare that for you guys and get that to you sometime this week.
Will this require a tweak in the ordinance we passed?
Yeah, absolutely. It was originally worked out that we had, that I included hearing examiner language. I'm not certain that I retained that language in the final draft. After making the final draft, so I'll go through my records. It shouldn't take too, too much to address. Six thirteen, if that's what we choose to, if that's what the board chooses to do.
Okay, perfect.
Anything else? No, and thank you.
Thanks for coming over. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I left this for you. I met with, and I know you've probably received the letter from them.
Yeah.
From Williams. They, they own the pipeline that runs north and south. They already have a pipeline and this is the spur that runs over to PGE. They're buying it from PGE and their project is to build a new station. To improve the pumping ability. They're not digging trenches or, or putting in new pipe. And so they wanted to explain that project to us. They had, they had people from Oklahoma, from back east. You know, they're putting a big push on this. They're having a meeting at LCC. I told them we do workshops on, on a Wednesday if they felt like they wanted to. I committed you guys without asking and I said, if you felt like you wanted to come to workshop. We'd schedule that and you could, you could, you could talk about your project if you, if you wanted. So. It was funny, there was, how many were there Kelly? There was probably. Probably seven of them. They came in to see me, so we sit at the big table here and they're all, like you say, they had. Person from Oklahoma. There's one local person from down in Vancouver and they're all. Trying, trying to sell me on this and I'm looking at it and go, I don't have a problem with this. But they're expecting, you know, just like we saw with the coal plant. The storage, the methane plant, they'll, they'll be somebody that will fight them on this. This thing, and so they're trying to get ahead of that.
Good for them though. I mean, this is, this is what we would, I would have liked to have seen come out of woodland was this kind of stuff.
Yeah. I've been considering for the last couple of years of putting gas line in. I know there's gas in the alley behind my house. I was gonna have them go ahead and run it up, put it in the house and change my. Definitely change my stove over to gas.
Yeah.
And probably my water tank in my dryer. Just get it done because I think gas is gonna be. Readily available and a lot cheaper down the road as we go forward with. The cost of energy sources until we.
Out of doubt.
Get serious about nuclear. As far as all this climate stuff, careful what I say there, but the climate attitude goes. Gas is by far the best option they got until they get to nuclear.
Yeah, you, you were there and I thought this was very interesting at the, the meeting last Tuesday that. CCRs, whatever, the letters meeting. Commissioner Daglish from PUD was there and talked about what. Town was it that was putting in a couple of those mini reactors that would?
SMR, small, small modular reactors. And it's in two on the east side.
Two on the east side and they're about three and a half million apiece.
Yeah.
Very costly and, and they'll run the whole, whole city or, or that whole, whole area.
And what's nice about nuclear is there's, is there any environmental impact?
I mean, no, and there's no waste anymore.
Yeah.
These, these bombs are not, not like you think of the old Trojan.
Yeah.
Across over here. It's just not, not the same anymore. The other I thought was interesting bit of news. Is everybody's yelling about the tariffs and stuff with Canada. Well. They entered a new treaty. It sounded like a three-year treaty.
Right.
With Canada and Canada is, is giving Bonneville thirty percent, thirty percent more power.
Right.
No cost. As part of the treaty.
Wow.
Yeah, it's an existing treaty. Basically they just updated it and it's because, I'm sure it's because of the Micah Dam, which is. A huge dam on the Columbia River that Canada built forty years ago, but. The agreement when they built that, there was a treaty that said that there was a huge option. For us to get more power out of that project as that reservoir filled up. Because it was on the, on the Columbia River and it was gonna affect us.
Yeah.
So.
So you hear all this. Negative stuff between us and Canada. Well, this was kind of a positive thing to, to hear that. Yeah, so I thought, I thought those were two interesting things that I wasn't aware of. Those, I have to look more at those small plants. It sounds like it could be a game changer.
I, I'm just stunned at. How many people have still got this old mentality about nuclear? They haven't looked at it. They've got Three Mile Island and the China Syndrome and that kind of attitude about it. And the sad part is, is how many families send their kids off in the service? And the submarines and the flat top carriers, the aircraft carrier, all these ships now are nuclear powered.
Yeah.
And, and they don't even give it a thought that they're scared to death to have one built in your town. And they got their kids out there on a, on a boat. It's running off nuclear power.
And they're not the big sites like, like Trojan anymore. He says it's like a twelve acre site.
Twelve acres, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no waste anymore. They, they recycle it. So.
It was interesting to hear, anyway. The, the other thing I wanted to bring up, have you guys seen this?
Yeah.
New proclamation?
For which, which one's that one for?
The sexual assault awareness month?
Yeah.
I. You. I'm not telling anybody how to do anything, but I don't like when they have all the numbers because I don't know where these numbers come from. And I hate spewing numbers that I don't know if they're, they're correct.
It would be nice to have the justification or the, the background for those. I agree.
As this sits right now, I can tell you I would be a no vote on it, but. They'd have to tell me where this stuff comes from.
I agree. I disagree with people that just sit down and get a proclamation written up. And then ask us to pass something without any understanding of exactly what it's based on. Yes, I agree that there's a problem with sexual assault. I got no arguments with that.
I don't have any arguments with that. I just want to know that when I'm reading numbers here, that I'm being accurate and not spewing.
You could probably just cross that whole bottom section off of there with the numbers and, and leave it well enough alone.
And it'd still be a good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I might suggest that to them, hey, I'm gonna get rid of these numbers. Cause I just don't know where they come from unless you can justify them and I can see the, the backup.
Yeah.
Okay. How was your?
I was just gonna say we can report on our, on our risk pool conference. It was, there's a lot of things that, that were brought up. That we're gonna have to deal with as, as members of the risk pool that a lot of counties are dealing with across the state of Washington. Primarily, the, the, number one, the statute of limitations being removed off of sexual assault cases. They brought up, they told us that when California did this, they had anticipated. An eight hundred million dollar increase to the claims that they currently had. And to date, they're at three billion right now. So they, they were not anticipating that, that big of an increase. One of the things that was really disheartening to me was that they said that the part of the money. Goes to, and Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong, goes to the bar association and they use that money for advertising. And, and to Commissioner Farrell's point, he said this when we were there, on the way there, I heard four advertisements for. If you've been in any Washington State correction facility and if you got abused, you know, call this number of attorneys. And so. Not only did they remove the statute of limitations, but they're now allowing these attorney firms to spend money to advertise to get people into them. And so the risk pool said that we're, we're anticipating a huge influx of claims with regards to that. They also talked about what our, our premium increase was gonna be this year, which they, he said straight across the board, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Straight across the board.
Yeah.
They also.
Is it kind of tied to this?
To what's going on. And, and the other thing that they said was that the, the, the size of the claims. Has also increased. So where in the past, somebody would have got a million dollars for whatever. They're now getting up to three times that for the same. You know, claim. And so. They said that the, the risk pool is one of the things that we're, that they're putting onto the counties. To help mitigate what's going on is, is we have to find ways to reduce our claims. And so Chelan, were you, did you take the, the jail tour? Did you get there to be able to do that?
No.
One of the things that they did was they have a, a scanner program now where all of the inmates have. I believe they wear like a wristband or something. And it, it monitors everything going on within their, their body. Heart rate, blood pressure, blood sugar, everything. And it, it tells them, hey, this inmate's having this going on so they can address that situation. You know, quickly and get on it. They said one of the, the largest portion of claims that we have is jails. In the jails is where most of it comes from. And so they're, they're looking for ways to. Have counties mitigate a lot of that and, and reduce those claims. But it was, it was very informational. There were a lot of things that, that we learned that were somewhat disheartening about the way that things work in our state, which was pretty frustrating. But yeah, there's gonna be some, some issues with, with risk pool. And they also said that. There are counties that were going to individual self-insured, but because of what's taking place that they're not. They're not able to do that, a lot of them any longer because they just don't have the capital to keep up with the, the size of the claims and the number of claims that are coming in.
And, and as drastically as it's changing, as it sounds, using the California example, how would you even know how much capital?
Yeah.
To have.
No idea. And I, I, I heard that. These huge law firms advertising on the radio and specifically spelling out if you have a, a sexual abuse case, even if it was thirty years ago when you were a juvenile. I mean, they're spelling out that if you were in a juvenile detention center and it was, no, it doesn't matter how long ago it was. Call this number real follicle. And I'm going, my God. I, I can't even imagine whether, you got no way, there's no records, they got no way to go back. And if it was thirty years ago. People that were in charge of those facilities at that time, they're dead and gone. I mean, you, you got no way to go back and prove or disprove.
The burden of proof.
It's gone. I mean, there's no way to do.
Be very difficult, wouldn't it?
And that's what the, to your point, Commissioner, what they're talking, what the risk pool is saying is. They're not, they don't know at this point what they need in capital reserves because of, of what's taking place with the amount of claims coming in. And with the size of the claims being what they are. And so they, they said that. Twenty-five percent for everybody in the risk pool to start. Is what they're looking at. Yeah, increase. Because of that, the, they, they have no idea what this is gonna do, where it's gonna put everybody.
I guess we'll send the bill to the port of Woodland.
Oh, please, God, please divert that to them. Add an extra zero or two.
Yeah, but there were some things that, that they brought up that, that Kathy and I discussed while we were there. That I know she's gonna look into and see if, if there's some things that we can do to, to help us out. So, but it was very informational, very eye-opening.
My, my participation got messed up. I lost a wheel bearing on my car on the way over.
You did?
And, yeah, I, as it got noisier and noisier, I was going slower and slower.
Oh, man.
And.
That's not a good thing.
Yeah, I pulled off the highway several times asking people. One time I pulled off in a marijuana shop, asking them. Where's the closest automotive center that I can get into?
Did they go, wow, that's cool, dude?
I had a lot of different fuzzy opinions about what might be making that noise in my car. But yeah, I finally limped it in and got in about an hour fifteen minutes later than I should have been to get into Lake Chelan. And I was just happy I made it without losing the axle, just burning it off. But I got it into Les Schwab first thing the next morning and they managed to get it fixed.
They got you all.
Got, got my car back to me Friday morning, so I didn't have to spend an extra night in a hotel.
Good for them.
Yeah, we did vote on a new executive director for the risk pool also, and he's got more insurance background and he's more claims focused and centered. So hopefully in the environment that we're in right now, he can.
Feels like we're trying to chase all insurance companies right out of the state of Washington.
Well, that's another thing that they said was that the, the number of insurer, of, of insurance companies that we used in the risk pool. Has grown from two to three. We're now to seven because they're not, they're not taking on as much risk. So we're having to get different insurers for different percentages of different types of risk. And so our portfolio of insurance now is.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
You know, seven right now.
Premiums are going up and the amount of coverage is going down.
Yep.
Yeah. Wow.
Interesting times.
Well. We can take ten minutes. I will note Tracy Adam was here at nine o'clock. I know. I, I've got a star on my wall. You, you always got a star.
Old star.
Yeah. Let's take a ten minute recess and we'll be back at ten.
We were advised by. Legal, not put in time. Because sometimes we finish early.
Yes. But you'd be eleven.
Oh, okay, so.
That's why. Hearing examiner, and I was like, okay, they're done. And they were doing a filler with this management. So I was like, let's go.
Okay, we're we're back. We'll move into uh. Agenda item review. I see building and planning at the top.
Good morning, gentlemen. Tracy Jackson, building and planning. And with me is Adam Trimble, uh planning manager. And I want to commend, I think it was Mike Moss and facilities for these nice black cushions. They're nice and clean and nice to sit on.
Oh, I didn't even, I didn't notice that.
Nice and cleaned up. It looks really nice in here.
Of any, anybody that would notice, it would be you.
It looks very modern. It looks pretty.
Yeah. So what you have?
We have trouble.
Just the public hearing?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
The uh it's just this. Uh private road thing, the D. Okay, yeah. So the uh public hearing is scheduled for tomorrow. During the regular meeting, it will be to hear a planning commission recommendation to amend the. Uh Couts County short subdivision ordinance. And this uh this recommendation comes to you unanimously from the planning commission. It is intended to shift the approval of private roads and driveways within short subdivisions from Public Works Engineering Department. The county engineer to the building and planning department director. And it was inspired to reduce the complexity and costs in processing private road development. And also just recognizing that we've heard many uh examples and and feedback from county residents and our stakeholders that. Uh in these kind of small development scenarios where maybe you're just adding one lot. Or you're going from a shared driveway that serves two properties and you want to add one lot that now you have three properties on that shared driveway. The the requirement would be to upgrade that shared driveway to a private road. And in those really small development scenarios, the the cost of that upgrade can be pretty, pretty tremendous. Um in some cases, these developments are brought by the family members. You know, somebody's looking at the property they have and they want to add that lot. Um but the upgrade of that driveway can be um a big lift, much bigger effort than the subdivision itself. And so this um proposal would give the Department of Building and Planning the ability to approve that. Uh road and it'll still be a a private road. But it'll be built to a standard that can safely support a fire apparatus, emergency vehicles. Um it'll be adequate for that purpose. Uh it may not be built to the standard where it could someday be upgraded to a type. B or type A, as we call them, the the higher grade roads that are meant to serve large areas of the county or. Multiple residences or multiple neighborhoods even. Um these are, these are small scenarios. It's probably a dead end scenario where it's just serving two, three, maybe four properties. And Couts County Building and Planning will be able to develop a road standard that uh should be pretty, pretty possible for even just a. A family development to to make that upgrade and make sure the road is adequate for emergency access. Uh but not necessarily built to a standard that it could be upgraded to like equivalent of a public road someday. Cause that's not the scenario that we're dealing with in these one, two, three and four lot developments. So. I hope that makes sense. Um that's the agenda for tomorrow is the public hearing. The board will be able to take testimony. This is considered a legislative change. So you can hold your own public hearing, make a decision on the recommendation and decide whether to adopt the amendments. Um I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have or um get into the details if you'd like.
One question that I had as you were talking, Adam, as we transfer this over to um building and planning. Tracy, is that gonna do anything to your staffing? Are you gonna need, how is it gonna affect you in that manner?
With these roads, no. This is, these are like fire apparatus roads. And we um will use our current staff and we have contract with Calitz too, if we need their um expertise. So we currently have that in place.
So could this be like a one lane gravel road as long as it'll hold the equipment?
Yep.
Okay.
I think I I sit in on the the planning commission and they unanimously approved this. They did have, there were people that. I'll say spoke against it, but but you you gotta understand where they're coming from and they're, they weren't really speaking against this change. Most everybody felt that this change would help. I mean, one. Figure I heard from a a gentleman that works with these type of families and stuff is like it'll solve like seventy five percent of the problems for. For the people they deal with. Their concern was that we were going to stop there and not address other things that they had concerns with. That was. That was the negative. You can correct me if I'm wrong, you were in there, but that's that's what I heard.
You're a hundred percent right.
Yeah.
They were afraid that the review that the BPAC has worked for the last two years, they didn't want that process to stop. They wanted it to continue. And they were afraid of if the board approved this little section of it, that the rest of the reviews would stop.
Yeah, and that that's really the only negative I recall hearing. And when Adam talks about costs. It really came to light to me with uh two sisters that bought some property and they divided it and to get the road up to deal. And we got bids, they were like eighty grand. It was just outlandish. And so this helped solve some of those those type of issues. So I I I thought it's been good work and I I hope it goes well tomorrow. So we'll see.
So is it safe to say that uh with this happening and it going from Susan's office to building and planning? Is it, it, I would, I'd have to imagine that the timing of permits and the timing of stuff getting done, this is also going to expedite and make things go quicker.
It will. Um but these are just type D roads. These are just for short plats. The rest of.
So for those individuals.
The rest of them all still go to public works through the private road process.
Yeah, but what I mean is is that since we're lightening the workload, it from one department to another, it should help.
Yep.
Move things. Okay.
So how many projects right now in existence are going to move to you, do you know? Are there any hanging in in wait?
For the, on these private roads.
Right.
Um I think there's four. I think we currently have four in process, but those aren't type D roads. I think those are B and C. So those would not affect, these would not be affected by this.
Okay.
So we don't have any currently in place that it would help.
I'm in favor of doing whatever we can to help out the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's been a long and trying process, but I think we got.
Well, this is just some, we we feel low hanging fruit that we can help with. And then um Susan's agenda item after ours will be. Our part two of it. So if you guys approve this, then you will approve hopefully her new memo. So we'll see.
Are there any perceived drawbacks to this that we are aware of?
The only thing that we've heard is from the BPAC members specifically was they were just afraid that the. Other reviews on private roads were just gonna go stale.
Okay.
But that was it. Everything else has been positive. Most of them do larger um developments. That, that was it. Everything else has been positive. Most of them do larger um, developments anyways. So it's just a piece, this is just a small piece that we can help with.
One of the things we run, we run into, and I don't, I don't really have an answer to fix it. You'll find and you can help me explain this. When somebody does like a short plat and then they put the road in and then they do another one and, and the road never gets upgraded. I know we run into that. Some people play that game. I don't think this affects the small people, cause these are just like you say, usually you're one or two people, but that is a, a, a game that gets played that causes us some issues at times.
And you know, it doesn't matter what rule you have in front of them or what, what policy you have in place, they'll all find a loophole no matter what it is.
Yeah.
Human nature.
Yes.
Shortcuts.
Yep.
Yeah.
Easy way out.
If you can get away with it.
Exactly. They just don't realize it affects their neighbor or the adjoining property or, yeah. Okay, so we'll be back tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Rowley, Public Works. Do you guys want to keep going on the public roads or private roads first, or would you like to jump around?
Whatever you want to do.
Follow your lead.
I'll go down the agenda then. Um, so the first item we have for, for you today is consent item number three. An operations, maintenance, and development agreement with Washington State Fish and Wildlife here for the Kerr Road Public Access Area on Silver Lake. So in nineteen ninety-seven, the county did an agreement with Fish and Wildlife to uh, maintain the boat launch there on Kerr Road. This is extending that, not a whole lot of activity from us on that site. We're, you know, maintaining the picnic areas. Vacuuming out the storm drains once a year. Low impact. Um, we're not fixing the boat ramp. That'll be on Fish and Wildlife if they choose to do that. So just make, maintaining that relationship for another ten years and keeping that open to the public.
Yeah, ironically, I had somebody ask me about the this last week because in a, and the conversation was they were up there and it was, it was popular. It was crowded. And is there a way to get more spaces in there? And I said, I don't even know if that falls under us. So maybe you can answer.
Must be the same person that jumped on me about it.
Probably so.
You know, even people in our office asked that they dredge and realign that boat ramp so it's easier to get the boats in and out. Uh, it is a state owned property. Um, we just facilitate the day to day maintenance on it.
So any, any more additional parking spaces or anything is a Fish and Wildlife thing?
Yeah, we can look at that and get with them and come back to you on some sort of result on that if you'd like.
I, I know a couple of have a question on that, so maybe
We can always ask the question.
If you can ask, then at least we'd have an answer, right?
And if there's not anything immediate, do they have any plans to expand that parking lot for more more people to access it?
Well, they're increasing their licenses by thirty-five percent, so hopefully they have plans for it.
Yeah, good luck.
They should have the money for it, right?
They probably got the money to dredge the lake too, but they're not doing that.
Uh, I also had people tell me that our, our parks department was responsible for, there used to be buoys or something out there. Is that true? Do you know?
I, I don't know about Silver Lake. I know we had
our parks were originally put them up and I'm going, I have no clue.
I have no idea. I know we were responsible for the ones on Willow Grove before the port took it over. But I know nothing about being responsible for Silver Lake.
Okay.
What kind of buoys are we, like the no wake buoys or?
Yeah, something, I don't know what they all said. Uh, just an old timer said, well, those are all gone now. And I remember your parks put, were, put the first ones up and I go he wasn't asking for more. He was just kinda
Was it just at the boat launch area he's talking about or?
Yeah, in Silver Lake.
The, the whole lake?
Yeah.
Oh my God, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought it would be odd that we would be responsible for that.
Yeah. We can always inquire and see what kind of history we can find on that if you like.
Like I said, it wasn't anybody asking for anything being replaced. They were just kinda telling me history and I was going, wow, okay.
Yeah. There's no, no more question on that one. Next up is number four on the consent agenda. It's amendment number three to the professional services agreement with Energy Nearing Solutions. Adding an additional one hundred thousand dollars, bringing the total contract to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is in um, for two items. The first item on that um, that would cover is our source testing of the flares at Headquarters Landfill. So we source testing both of those flares. It's in every five years we have to do that. Um, last time we did it, we had a destruction rate of ninety-nine point nine 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 seven percent. And so we just have to do that process. And so that's what that first bit's for, and that's about seventy-five thousand dollars. The last part of that is to continue on with our greenhouse gas reporting and third party verification. That's a newer project that started last year with the Climate Commitment Act from the state. We have to do a third party verification. And so this is for twenty twenty-four's third party verification.
And is that second half gonna be done every year? That climate part?
It does.
It does.
Just making notes.
Sure.
Trying not to gag. Okay.
That's all for me. I think Susan's next.
So then our final item is the motion item, which is the uh, amended and supplemental memo for the private road standards. It amends the existing memo, adding the type D road and changing the definition of a type C to take out the items that go on a type D roadway. Um, at this time, that is all we're changing. Um, we have the general standards, just so that you know of what I put in the memo. So for permitting and review, a private driveway, a private road that serves more than two but less than five shall be considered a lesser type of access and shall meet the requirements of a type D access, which shall be defined, regulated, and approved by the Department of Building and Planning and the building official. So that is how we're putting it in the memo for approval. And then we took out the definition the lower number of lots from the type C roads. So that is the amendment and supplement to the existing memo.
So specifically less than five is four or less or five and less?
Less than five is four and, four and less, yes.
So five or more goes to the next class.
Goes up to type C, which is what it is in now.
Okay.
So.
So tomorrow we'll run through the public hearing and when I close that down, then we'll go into this motion item.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. You're just hanging out?
We're hanging out for miscellaneous when you're ready.
Oh. I think we're we're good. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So uh, the miscellaneous item that I have is today is the exciting day that every year we submit our crab reports for twenty twenty-four. So as part of that, there will be a certification coming through for Commissioner Dahl's signature. Uh, the certification basically states that yes, we are reporting our financial records for twenty twenty-four accurately. Uh, so we include this reporting season is the pavement management certification, the Kappa, which is a county artiro preservation account. I had to memorize that one. The last A always gets me. Um, reporting how much we've done on fish passage. This is a crab initiative to let everybody know how much we're spending. Certifying that we did not do any work outside of the right of way. And then the report of what we spent in our annual construction program. Did I forget any? Cause it's six, right? And then the certification makes six.
Yep, I think so. I think you got most of them.
So that, they were doing a final review this morning, so uh, once everything looks good, we will start processing that through for signature.
The, my miscellaneous is in regard to some legislation currently going on. Uh, I think in the past, we've talked a little bit about um, Senate uh, Bill eleven fifty-four. This is the one that allows ecology to approve permits uh, and override some of the jurisdiction, jurisdictional health department. Through our legislative group, uh, through WASAC. They've recommend, uh, asked that we write some letters and possibly testify on this bill in the future and how it could affect our local landfills. Uh, so we really wanted to talk with the board on that and get a blessing that it'd allow us to go down that path and represent the, the county on some of these issues on this bill from a solid waste perspective.
What is it the bill wants to, to accomplish?
Yeah, so a lot of the bill, uh, starting from the top, uh, it requires the Department of Ecology to approve all permits for landfills prior to issuance or renewal by the jurisdictional health department. It, it authorizes ecology to suspend a permit, impose civil penalties for a solid waste handling facility that is operating um, in violation of any solid management requirements. And then also requires the jurisdictional health departments to report to ecology every five years. But we come down to some difference of perspectives. As staff changes within ecology, sometimes the perspectives change, the requirements may change, the goalposts may move. And you know, we've seen this in Stevens County already previously where the jurisdictional health department there says, yes, this is good. They're doing three times the required reporting. But the health department, excuse me, the state says we want more. It also allows ecology to um, currently as written, allows them to come in and override the local health department without request from the health department itself. So we may be looking at um, dual enforcement authority challenges and other things along that where you know, the local board may think this is great following up to permit while ecology may have a different perspective on that.
So what I'm hearing is this gives ecology Olympia more authority?
It does. What we'd, I think what we'd like to see in the end is the ability for ecology to come in if the health department requests it. You know, sometimes there are issues, especially in Eastern Washington right now with certain landfills where the health department needs some assistance or impose some civil penalties on that. And they just don't have the authority to do it. And if there was a request for ecology to help out, that'd be great. But we'd really like to see that request and not just an override of the department itself.
Well, I'd probably be stronger on that, but that's you're just asking if it's okay for your, as a landfill, are you guys to write letters or, or go up and, and speak at
Hundred percent.
any of these committees?
Yep.
Yeah. You're the one that's knowledgeable.
Perfect. Thank you.
And you can call them nitwits if you want.
I'm not gonna do that.
You can refer him to Commissioner Dahl.
Yeah.
I'm quoting.
You can tell I called them nitwits. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I see Jessica. Jessica, I see you in the room. You wanna just move forward? There we are.
Good morning. Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I just have a request for an executive session for performance of a public employee.
Time?
Um, five.
Okay. Okay, we'll go into executive session, performance of a public employee, five minutes. [Music] Hey, back from executive session. No decisions made. I'll turn it back over to Jessica.
Okay. I have a request for Human Resources. I'm requesting to increase the steps for my HR analysts and my senior HR analyst by one additional step, which is roughly two and a half percent each effective April first. And then they would keep their regular step increases on ten-one for the HR analyst and two-one for the senior HR anal, two-one twenty-two-six for the two, for the senior.
Okay. I think, I don't see anybody opposed. No.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Mount St. Helens Learning Institute, we did a support letter forum to our state legislature, right? Or some funds to that. And they're asking for the same for our federal. And it looks like it's pretty much, they're looking at infrastructure stuff. I know they've had some issues with their septic and their, and their water systems. So they're, they're asking us for a letter of support that they can send to their federal representative.
Yeah, I read through this. I, I got no problem with it. Okay. We're all good with that. Good.
I got it. Okay. Gina. There she is. So it looks like on your homeless housing, has this, Ray's been on there a while? This just reappointment?
He, he has, he's not currently appointed to the board. He has served two terms previously. So he has spent four years on the task force. He wasn't appointed the last time he applied. And he's reapplying now to serve as an, on another term. So he is, he's eligible to serve another term and we have a couple of positions open, so.
And nobody else has come forward?
Not that I've seen. We, the homeless housing task force can have up to fifteen members. We currently have twelve members. It doesn't mean we have to have fifteen. It's just sort of an up to amount. So. Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but Gina, it says that he was not reappointed. Was that his own choosing or what happened with that?
When he applied, I think it was twenty-three or twenty-four. The board chose not to reappoint him at that time.
Was there a particular reason?
I'm trying to remember back. I'm not sure if there was other applicants. Or it was just the position of the board at the time.
Did you have the full fifteen-member board at the time?
I don't believe so. I don't think we've, I don't think we've ever had the, a full fifteen membership. I think we've always been around ten, twelve, thirteen, right in there.
I, I guess that leaves me questioning why, if he would have been a member within the fifteen, there, why he wouldn't get reappointed? Is there a limit to the number of general members on the board?
There's not, no. There's a few required membership pieces which we, we have in place. Just, I think just three required memberships which we have in place and the rest are general.
So do you have any issues with him being appointed to the board?
No, I've worked with him. Like I said, he's served on there before. I sit with him on another advisory board, so I know him well. So, yeah.
I, uh, I remember, I did vote not to have him back on here. I don't, in my, I, I like Ray. I don't have any problem with Ray, but his philosophy and my philosophy are diametrically opposed when it comes to homeless, so that's why I said no.
Okay. So it was just a philosophical difference?
Yeah.
Okay.
He, he's not a obnoxious person or a mean person or anything like that.
Okay. I guess if everybody's comfortable with it, I'm not opposed to it.
I'm not either.
Okay. Veterans, do we have an opening?
Well, we do not. The Veterans Advisory Board has in their bylaws that they have nine members. And we currently have nine members. We do have one member I'm checking with due to their attendance, but they are still currently a member, so. As of right now, we are full on that advisory board.
I know this gentleman was introduced to me. I know there's certain people who like to have him, but I, if we don't have any openings at the current, there's nothing to fill, right?
Yeah, that, that might change. Like I reached out, like I said, I reached out to one member just to touch base about their attendance and see if they still want to be on the advisory board. So we could certainly, you know, circle back if, if the member drops out of the advisory board.
If that member drops, I, I don't have any issues here. I just, I'm just, alls I'm saying is I don't think there's an opening right at the moment. So we're just kind of, I think there'd be nothing to fill unless you find out different.
You're just gonna hold on to that application?
Yeah.
For now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're like, I don't think Gary's on. Gary from WSU kind of oversees that committee out there. Basically made up by a lot of locals and they just kind of monitor Silver Lake. There's things they'd like to have. I, I can tell you that. They'd like, is he on? Oh.
I don't see him. There he is.
Uh, can you hear me now?
I can, Gary. How are you?
Good morning, Commissioners. Gary Fredericks with WSU Extension. I have been on the Silver Lake Water State Committee since it was, council since it was formed quite a long time ago, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You, how many sit on that, Gary? Do you remember?
I believe seven.
Seven?
Correct.
Do you know this gal at all, Sarah?
Um, I know that she's made a couple of meetings. I don't know her very well. Since I'm not really up from the tool area, but she's quite active. She has given some, some good views and some great insights. I know that we had just, John Byers just stepped off of the committee just recently, so I know there is one opening.
Okay.
I wouldn't have any hesitation in bringing her on.
Okay. That's good enough for me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
I really appreciate you being easy on me this morning.
Always, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to hosting all three of you individually tomorrow at WSU Extension.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that's it. I don't see anything else, right? Heard about the trip. We're all good? Okay. Till tomorrow morning. We will adjourn. Thank you.